Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Joint Work Session with the Fire Commission. Let me welcome all of our viewers at home here to the Eileen Dondaro-Foley City Council Chambers on July 27th. Let me also welcome Fire Commissioners Chairman Gamester, Fire Commissioner Hughes, and Fire Commissioner Wentworth, Fire Staff and Chief Leclerc for this discussion. I will say on the record that we have had a closed meeting prior to this as obviously some of the discussion in keeping a fire station open or not are personnel and collective bargaining related. We are now ready to have a further public discussion about these issues. And Chief Leclerc has done some work in some of the questions that have been asked by Council Dwyer and others to understand the implications of retirements and other sorts of numbers. Chief Leclerc has done some work on a new picture as to what we might see, and it would be helpful if he could offer that information at this time to get the discussion going. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Meeting members of City Council. We had two, three firefighters and two officers retired in the last month or so. Those savings, we thought, would amount to about $75,000. Through the administration's work, looking at uniform salaries, stipends, longevity, holiday pay, retirement, and Medicare, the difference between a top-step retiring firefighter or fire officer and the new people either being promoted to those ranks or new hires in the door, we'd realize the total savings of approximately, and again, these are projected numbers, of $110,000, slightly more. If you recall, in the budget meetings, when I told you that there was an issue between fixed costs and the amount of money that was shorted in fiscal year 11 to a total of $344,321. The Commission has agreed, even though it's going to cause a lot more work for one person in fire prevention, and some stuff may not get done. Savings on one person in our fire prevention office amounts to $90,000, which brings our potential shortfall for fiscal year 12 to $254,000. Retirement savings off of that number of $110,000 with other adjustments leaves total funds needed from the City Council to fund the fire department with three stations for fiscal year 12 of $158,586.
Thank you, Chief. And this time, it'd be helpful, you know, councilors, commissioners, this is a work session. We proceed in usually a more free-form fashion. You know, Station 3, at this time, as we understand it, would be closed at the end of this month. But the discussion here is to look at the financial situation, talk about potential options, and that's something we can go ahead and do. So if people want to ask operational questions or speak to these issues, please do so. So first, Councilor Hetmanic. And I will ask you, these microphones, sometimes we are like Lennon and McCartney. We have two of us to a microphone sometimes. So just ask that you speak into the microphone clearly so people hear you.
This is not about finances, but rather operational from the point of view. A lot of this is about public safety and response time, and I wonder if you can provide any information about how response time is affected if we don't have Station 3, both fire and EMS.
Certainly, Councilor. With Station 3 closed, that would be Station 1 or Station 2 responding out to those districts. Normally, it'd fall between a nine- to 11-minute response time. Just to give you some ideas, from going from Court Street to Gosling Road from Station 1 is about 11 minutes. From Station 2 to Gosling Road is about nine minutes. From Station 3, it's about six. A lot of our calls out at P's have to do with the industry, have to do with our health care facilities. So another example, going from Court Street to Martin's Point Health Care, which is on P's, is 12 minutes from Station 2. It's exactly the same. But to get to Martin's Point Health Care from Station 3 is three minutes. So to give you an idea of how the response times will increase. So for Station 3 responding to the calls on the tradeport in the close vicinity, they can do it between three to five minutes. Coming up from Station 2 or Station 1, anywhere between nine and 12 minutes.
Councilor Spear?
The Governor recently said he's going to let the budget in the state go into law without his signature, so it'll become law. Do you have a sense, with the change in the pension contributions from the state side, how much that's going to increase the departmental cost for labor for the fire department?
Do you want me to answer that, Chief?
Sure.
John? Chief, with your okay, John's going to respond.
We received the information from the New Hampshire retirement system indicating, number one, that there is adjustment that's going to happen from the 35% down to the 25% subsidy. But they're not going to recertify those numbers for one to three months. So we won't actually have a certified number to be using because not only did the legislature reduce from 35 to 25%, but they also did some adjustments in, as you are aware, in the employees' pension contributions. Further, they added another $3.5 million to try to make up the gap between what would be about 22% subsidy to 25%. So right now, the New Hampshire retirement system's in the process of recertifying those numbers. But the city must start collecting from the employees July 1, those new contributions. We have done a rough estimate for citywide, from going from 35% down to the 25% subsidy. In citywide, we have $457,000 shortfall. For the fire department, that's about $127,000 of the $457,000, $127,000, depending on level of pay people are at, depending on a number of things. But the other issue will be when they recertify the numbers, then we'll have an actual number. And that won't be for about, what, three months? One, three months, yeah?
Any comment on that, Chief?
Yeah, and also, the contributions from the firefighters themselves are going up 2.5%.
Yes, they're going up. And those, yes, that is correct. Those have to go into effect July 1. And that's the difference they're going to make up hypothetically, the amount that they had shortfall in the budget and the additional amount that was shortfall. My understanding is the legislature did appropriate $3.5 million to make up that shortfall. They have to come up with a recertification of a number that, as a percentage, that we have to have to collect the difference.
Council Dwyer?
Just to follow up on that, John, because I think it's just incredibly confusing. And because where we last left some of it, the state was suggesting that their changes were going to essentially make it level for municipalities. But what you're suggesting is it's a minimum of this 400 and whatever thousand?
$457,000.
Would be a minimum, and then we may get more? Or is there still stuff in play that may attempt to make it?
Well, it's not in play. It's just a matter of figuring out what they passed and how that will affect and how the contributions, the new contributions, as the chief said, the increase in contributions will make up the difference. If you recall, back two years ago, the legislature suspended the 35% subsidy for police, fire, and schools, which it was supposed to return on July 1, 2011, at 35%. That was the law. The law was adjusted as part of the whole pension reform that the legislature did and brought down the subsidies for police, fire, and schools from 35% to 25% effective July 1. And the way they're going to make it whole is that they had intended to take a portion of the money from, actually, the money from the employees, the increase in their contributions, plus a supplemental amount from the state to bring them up to the 25%. That's what they're saying will make people whole. They're saying the 25% makes us whole.
Okay.
But the fact of the matter is, the law, until it changed and come into effect on July 1, would have put the subsidy back at 35% because originally, it was a suspension, 35 to 25%.
Right.
And I just want to make one thing clear. In the law, come July 1, 2012, we are now going to be responsible for 100% of pensions. So that 25% will be gone.
Say that again, John?
Come fiscal year 2013, July 1, 2012, there won't be any subsidy. That's in the law.
Nancy?
We recently had the Professional Management Association agree to the school care. Do we know how much, if the fire department were to go to school care for the health insurance, do we know how much that would be in savings?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, if the city manager has that number and he can respond, it'd be helpful.
If you get it out. That number would be $146,000.
That would be a savings of $146,000.
Yeah, if the employees chose to move to school care from the LGC, Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Chief?
Well, I think that may be answered my question. Is that $146,000, assuming that all of the personnel are on Blue Choice?
No. It's what they are on today.
Okay.
And assuming they go to the same type of plan, so hypothetically, like we did for the PMA, we saw if people were on an HMO, if they were on, you know, a point of service, that we basically converted them from that location to, over to, school care. So if they stay in that, or more migrate to an HMO, which could happen, or some migrate, you know, back to point of service, that could reduce that amount somewhat.
Commissioner Gamester?
The question I have is, I have just recently, I think I remember hearing school care a long time ago, but I know that a couple of the unions have gone to it. Why is all of a sudden, school care becoming a product that we didn't have last year or two years ago? Where did it come from?
Let me explain that, Commissioner. We've been working since 1999 with school care. We've been working to negotiate, to try to negotiate, school care within collective bargaining agreements. In 1999, the Supervising Management Alliance did go to school care. It's not that we haven't been doing it, such as even now, many employees are looking, even within the existing healthcare product, they're looking at the HMO option of Matthew Thornton because there are substantial savings. Once the premium share got to 18% to 20%, Commissioner, all of a sudden, people are now paying $5,000, $6,000, depending on the plan they have. So now, they're looking at the HMO product of Matthew Thornton. And in the case of the PMA, they chose to look at the Cigna product because it had substantial savings for their individuals. Not only does the city save, but the employees save. So it's a win-win for both sides. The product has been around since 1999 and has been in one of our collective bargaining groups.
I knew it had been. I just didn't know why it wasn't.
Well, it has.
I didn't hear it more often.
Well, we've been saying it a lot. I mean, we've been trying to push in that direction. But the point is that it has to go through a collective bargaining process.
Correct.
And so, we've had five-year contracts. So the reason that you haven't heard it on a regular basis is because once a contract's been negotiated, we have a tendency, and unions have basically, and they don't, you know, they basically have negotiated a contract, and they have, they feel that that's the contract that we should be working under. With regards to the Professional Management Association, we explained to them some of the savings. We said, "Okay, you know, do you want to look into it further?" And they talked to some of their counterparts at SMA, and they were happy with the program, and they chose to go that way. And we have other unions that are asking us the question. The theory behind, back in 1999, was when we were at 10% premium share, and I do recall this conversation, is that we increased premium share 1% a year, basically, to get it up to the 18% to 20% it is now, depending on what collective bargaining agreement is. Because in 1999, we convened a meeting of all collective bargaining groups to talk about insurance, because insurance was an issue back then, and it still is. And at that time, people felt they did not want to move from the Blue Cross Blue Shield product, and they were very adamant about it. And so, we've been working quietly, you know, because we understand that insurance is a very personal matter. People have a very strong feeling about it. And we've been slowly trying to work with people to understand the differences in the product. And the product really is a good one. It's just a matter of a different way of approaching how the insurance is derived. So that's the answer to your question.
Follow up on that, Dick, or no?
No, no. When John said two, five-year contracts, you're right. Five-year contract with three years or not?
Eight years.
We're eight years in, and easy to forget.
Tony?
Question for the city manager. There's no exclusive, let me back up, and so the thought process is clear. The products offered right now?
Yes.
Are purely Anthem products, correct?
Excuse me?
Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Could you restate that question?
Products right now offered to the fire department unions.
It's not that they're offered, they're in their contract.
In their contract, are only Anthem, or Blue Cross Blue Shield products.
Correct. Which is a Blue Cross Blue Shield product.
And Blue Cross Blue Shield has an exclusive agreement with the LGC?
Correct.
There's no exclusive agreement with school care with the LGC?
No, the school care is its own entity.
So theoretically, if we got all the unions to go to a different product, we could leave the LGC?
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically, which is something we've heard a lot of unions asking.
We would probably stay with them for property and liability. Further questions, comments, discussion? Councilor Dwyer?
Just a comment, and I, you know, I think it's one where the council has to really think about. So I thank the Fire Commission for coming up with the number. And when we realize the number is actually not very large to keep Station 3 open, and especially wouldn't be very large if, you know, some of these changes in collective bargaining were to come about, the number would be pitifully small. However, I recognize that the commission isn't in the position, nor are we, to assume that the unions will do what is in their and the city's interest in this case. They may have a different perspective on what's in their interest. So, you know, theoretically, that number is somewhere between $12,000 and $158,000 to keep Station 3 open for a year. I think the challenge, and I think everyone in the council agrees with this, we all know that if we were to do that for this year, that does not serve a long-term problem. None of us are thinking that that solves a long-term problem. And so I think the decision is really about, do we believe there are longer-term solutions that are worth working toward with the Fire Commission while we keep Station 3 open? Or are we so convinced that there aren't longer-term solutions that we say, why would we invest that money at this point? I personally believe there are some solutions that may, in the long run, and this is a mix of things. It's not just, you know, one solution, but would be a mix of things. Some are contract-based, some are practice-based with other communities, et cetera, that, as I said at the last meeting, I just really don't want to do the close it, open it, close it, open it. I think we need to make a decision and go forward. I know we're not voting on that tonight, but I think the, it may or may not help some councilors to have any signals, which I'm not asking the Fire Commission to give us because I don't think they can, of whether or not there would be any potential changes in contracts. There would be any bargaining on the other end because if we, to me, if we get those signals that we can get, whittle this down to, you know, $12,000 or $10,000, I don't think there's any council who would say, "Close it now." It doesn't make any sense, given what we've learned about response time, given what we've learned about transition. I just think, even if it's in the cards to close it in the long run, we need more transition time to figure out how we're going to give those services. So I think we've taken the money about as far as we can go. You know, we know what the savings are, we know what some of the choices are. Before it gets into the, back into the bargaining table, I don't think we can do a lot more. We have the figures that we have, it seems to me, unless there's some missing questions at this point. So I think the discussion really is about timing and transition.
So, Councilor Dwyer, what I'll do is I'll speak to, and thank you for phrasing it that way. So where we are procedurally, both for the community and Councilor Smith will get right to you, where we are procedurally, then, is obviously, we're not in a position to appropriate until the 1st of July. Is that correct? Just to check with the city manager and attorneys? Okay. So we don't, we're not, and we don't have a meeting properly noticed, et cetera, to make any appropriations. We're having a discussion now that could be a precursor to appropriation, and that's something we can think about. And I just kind of set it up that way so people have a sense as to where we are. But make no mistake, Chief has indicated July 1, the station is closed, we may take some further action, and maybe we'd hear more from the Fire Commission on that as well. But I don't know what we're going to do, and we're going to, you know, have a little bit more discussion tonight, see if we get a direction or not. Councilor Smith?
Thank you. I too. I see it, this is basically two different issues. The first one is, as a policy setting, which the City Council is, and we do set what the services that the citizens of the city ask for. And that would be, is, as a policy, do we have three fire stations in the city of Portsmouth? With the information that we receive from the chief and just, you know, and time responses, and everyone, you talk about the one that's just on P's. You know, P's has 7,000 employees. It is not, there are several of those businesses that are 24 hours a day. The newspaper's out there, the passport center's out there, the rehab hospital's out there, Alanza's out there. Those are running 24 hours a day, thousands of employees. Let alone, you have the Panaway Manor neighborhood, you have the Gosling Meadow neighborhood, you have Oriental Heights neighborhoods and that whole area. People are living there 24 hours a day. So it's a policy setting of, do we have Station 3 or not? And I think that's the first question we have to ask. Then, how we fund it will be next. Because I think we've made some great headway tonight, working with the Fire Commission, and what our ideas are of possibly coming up with ways of funding this, and I think there are long-term ways of handling it. Do we have to put some upfront money while they go back and do what they do well in negotiating their contracts? Yes, I think we should. But I think the first and the most important thing we have to do is, as a policy setting, do we want three fire stations within the city of Portsmouth? I say yes.
Okay.
But I think that's a question we have to ask ourselves. Otherwise, the meeting's over, we're done. If the idea is, there's not going to be three stations. Let the chief go close down Station 3, let them get back to work, and we go on about our business.
Thanks, Councilor Smith. Councilor Spear?
I just want to try to, in understanding how unique the fire department budget is in terms of, you have your regular salary time, and then the big number that's changing for this budget is which line item? The regular, we're not, my understanding is, we're not going to lay anybody off, even under the past FY12 budget.
Shift staffing.
Shift staffing.
As you call it, overtime.
It's all shift staffing or overtime?
All covering shifts, keeping stations open.
Okay. And the reason for the overtime, one of the questions, because I'm really just trying to understand how the staffing works and the cost for staffing. You have 14 people per shift, is that right?
Thirteen.
And then, 13?
No. There's 14 people assigned per shift, there's four shifts.
And there's four shifts.
Yep. Four groups overlapping, two days, two nights, four days off.
When I looked at the information the fire department provided on the days taken, was it the fire department or the personnel?
Human resources.
Human resources. You look at the number of days taken off per day, or number of people taking days off per day, the numbers are, especially in some of the months, are half the, half the shift might take off, up to three-quarters of the shift might take off. And so that's why you see those overtime slots that have to be filled at the overtime rate, right? When you have, when you're trying to run a department and you have, you know, one-quarter to three-quarters of your shift out for leave, that's really the tension from a cost standpoint, right?
Everybody that works for the fire department accumulates through contract. Through the Earn Time Program, they accumulate days off, and they're certainly entitled to take those days off.
Absolutely. But another way, I'm trying to say, another way to crack that nut, just like we were talking about with the school care, or school care, is in the contract. This is also in the contract, but if you were to have fewer days taken off to fill, to have those slots being open, you would be able to have, hypothetically, you would be able to have the Station 3 stay open under the same budget constraints that we're under today, right?
You asked the same question twice, but you answered your own question.
Yeah. Would that be true?
Meaning, if everybody deserves a two-week vacation per year, and they take them, you have 104 weeks off out of 52. You've got to fill those shifts.
Right.
Whether they all take them in November, or they spread them gently, not counting sick time, not counting medical time, as you heard this evening, not counting any workman's comp scenario, bad back, broken leg, whatever we run into, we run into it all, it seems. It's never going to happen on an even basis, and it just slaps you in the head sometimes when you go, "Oh, you've got to cover this, got to cover that." But go ahead, Chief, you want to say something?
Chief, and then Council Kennedy, and then Council Coviallo.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I directed your draft.
No, we're fine. Chief was, he was, we're cool. Go ahead, Chief.
When you get into, thank you, Mayor, when you get into the Earn Time Program, and you get right into the history of leave and being able to accumulate leave and sell it back to the city, and who can and who can't, it's a very complex issue. But for those people that have that leave and have no incentive to save it, they use it. And that's contractual. If the city want to negotiate less days off, that's certainly something that can be brought up in negotiations.
Okay. So, Council Kennedy, then Council Coviallo, then Nancy.
I find this decision very tactically difficult. And one of the reasons is, is I don't think we have all the answers. I understand response time. I feel we have that answer of what the response time is. My concern is, I'm not sure what it reflects on the PDA, P's Development Authority, for those people out there, and how this affects them and the entities that are out there. And I briefly had a discussion with one of the entities, and they feel it will affect them greatly in insurance and just response, and getting people to come and work and everything else. And I haven't been told by anyone, and I would, I guess, ask the city manager to maybe give us some input on what, as a city member of the PDA, what does the PDA feel about this? And if they feel strongly about it, another angle I would look at is what, if anything, they would be willing to invest or support in keeping Station 3 open. I mean, I think, to be honest with you, we didn't have all this question when Station 2 came out. And Station 2 receives the lowest amount of responses. And that's a brand-new station, and I get it, and it's happening. My question is, is there's another whole entity involved in here, and will they? they, or are they willing to pick up in any involvement? The other community that has some involvement, that might be interested in seeing what we're doing here, is Newington, because I'm sure the response, and supporting response calls that comes from Station 3 to go to Newington, they might like the short distance. So I guess, I feel at this point, I was waiting, and I told everyone I was waiting to see what the state would do, and with the governor accepting the budget, I don't seem to, it doesn't seem that we're going to be as bad as we thought we were at one point. So for $150,000, I think we're buying a year. And looking at all these what-ifs, I agree with Council Dwyer, we don't close it down, we don't open it, close it down, open it. But I think there's a lot of questions out there that we, beyond the response time, that we might be affecting people. And I think in this time of business, we don't want to lose the big businesses out there. I do question their tax rate, but I think we need to sit down with the PDA and have a conversation of what Station 3 really means to the PDA.
John, do you care to speak to that?
We certainly can have that conversation. We've had the conversation with, you know, I've had it with the Executive Director, you know, from an optimal standpoint, of course, they'd like to have the Station 3 out there. But also, they feel that, they feel that there is adequate coverage if, if in the event Station 3 closes, not optimal coverage. And there's a difference, and the chief described that. So that's really the issue. I mean, the Executive Director, and the Pies Development Authority, and the Tenants Association, yes, of course, they'd like to have Station 3 open. But if it doesn't stay open, then, again, they would, they would basically find it to be not an optimal situation. Can I, it's really, that's, I only can respond to what the chief has provided and what I've talked to relative to the Executive Director.
I guess the question I would have is, have you heard any cost figures that they might concur, incur because of it closing in insurance rates or anything like that?
I've heard different information, and, you know, the problem is that I think we need to find somebody that can give us the right answer on that. I've heard that it would not affect insurance rates. But, you know, again, you talked to one, I've talked to some people that say one thing, and I'm sure there are others that say other things. The issue really becomes what people feel is optimal. And the chief described a situation where if you didn't have Station 3 open, what is the response time relative to that? And it is, in a perfect world, is not an optimal situation. Given the constraints that the City Council is wrestling with right now, is it adequate? Well, it would remain to be seen over a period of time to see if those responses would be adequate for that.
I'll just add a point of information, speaking to Council Kennedy's offering, and please feel free to correct me, John, or anyone else who remembers looking at their weekly packages and so forth. But I do not recall that we received a letter from the PDA with a vote of the PDA Board saying, "Please keep it open."
And again, Your Honor, I would, and to be fair to the PDA, I think from an, they would like to see it stay open.
Right.
But they know that there's certain decisions that are made by the City Council, and that there are certain decisions made by the PDA. And they, even though they may not be happy with that, and because it's not optimal to them, they understand those decisions, because they understand what their role is, and they understand what the City Council's role is. And, again, that the Tenants Association are concerned, I would say that, because, again, Station 3, one of the things that I think I heard most about the issue is having an ambulance at Station 3. That's what I personally have heard the most about.
Others to weigh in on this, and we have a lot to speak, and I'll just say, you know, if we're, if we're starting to focus towards whether we decide to keep this open or not, then we can ask some questions about appropriation, how that might work, or we may decide that we don't have a collective desire to do that. So I'm just, I just, you know, again, that's, that's kind of where this is headed, and I hope people stay in that direction. Council Coviallo, then we'll move up this side.
Chief, now that your number is down to 158,000, or for the Commission, I didn't mean to direct it to one person, down to 158,000, are you able to keep it open, Station 3 open, for a few months? Or is, at what point, you know, is there a cost per month? I understand, because you're not reducing staff, that you're not getting a lot of savings, but is there any option to keep it open for a little bit while longer, so we can continue the conversation?
The $158,000, counselors, to keep the station open, projected amount, and again, no promises, to keep the station open, because there's so many variables when it comes to overtime, such as long-term injury. I mentioned an injury in the non-public that's going to take three months. That's a long-term vacancy, depending on injuries, depending on fire volume. That's the best guess now, with the 110, is that 158,000. I cannot spend money on a promise, or on make-believe, or what you think might happen. If the money is not appropriated to keep Station 3 open from the City Council before July 1, then it closes.
Well, practically speaking, if we were to have a meeting to appropriate funds to keep it open, that meeting would occur in July, just from a practical perspective as to where we are in the process, and I just raised that. Could we have a special meeting and notice it theoretically? Is it likely, given that this is the 27th of June, I think? Not, John?
If I might, just so to understand, if you were to appropriate more money, you would have to have a public hearing, a two-thirds vote of the City Council to do a supplemental appropriation, and the public hearing would have to be noticed.
So I said I'd move up this side, and I will. A Council listener, then we'll get back over to Council Dwyer, and then Assistant Mayor.
Thank you. Well, we agreed earlier tonight that this is probably a discussion that's happening in 1,000 other communities around public safety, specifically around the Fire Department. But I'd like to, and there are certainly some things that we, that are in negotiations, that may have an effect on whether or not we can do something here. But could I just, and I know that Fire Chief, Chief Leclair, has explained this to us 47 times, but for the purpose of tonight, and for the community, could you just tell us the Reader's Digest version of, if Station 3 were to remain open, what equipment is out there?
Certainly. With current staff, with, well, fiscal year 11 and prior staffing, it provided enough money in the budget that we have an engine and ambulance at Station 1 and Station 2. Due to the size of the building and the way it accommodates staff, there is a primary engine out there, a reserve engine, an ambulance, and other support vehicles. Because there is only a limited amount of personnel out there, if you remember, for years, I've asked the Council 15 personnel per shift. I've said it for 10 years now. So we could have five, five, and five, which would give us an engine, ambulance, and service at each station. We've never been able to accomplish that number, so Station 3 remains an engine company with the ambulance in reserve. Now, the ambulance will move when there's a large incident, recall comes back and takes that ambulance, people off duty, or if there's a major incident in the city, multiple car accident, or a mass casualty, where both primary ambulances are tied up and ambulance 3 is asked for. We try not to do that, because then that takes the crew off the engine and puts the engine out of service. As I've explained to the Council 46 times, that the engine is a multipurpose vehicle that can get the medical care, fire suppression, hazardous materials mitigation, whatever the case may be, which, jaws of life, which makes it a much more practical piece to put my, or practical basket to put my eggs in, to handle multiple calls. So the transporting rig, because I don't have the two firefighters out there to operate it, is primarily in reserve and standing by.
Thank you, Chief. Nancy, let's give her the mic. There you go.
I guess I, I've mentioned these things before, and I'm going to mention them again. We had heard from Rick Condon at one of our meetings a while back about the willingness of the union to sit down and talk about insurance changes. I believe we did it in the public comment session of one of our meetings. And I guess I'm a little disappointed that the chief and the commission didn't jump on that and see if they could do something like the school care, which, if we were looking at that now, we'd be looking at $146,000. So, I mean, this was a while ago that that was mentioned in a public setting. So I guess maybe I'm just a little disappointed, knowing that the Council was asking for 0% increase from all the departments, that perhaps could have been a way that some money could have come our way, or come to the way of the Fire Department. I also, I've talked about this before, and I know the chief and the commission don't like the idea, but somebody just said, you know, "Let's just have an ambulance at Fire Station 3." As our City Manager mentioned, some of the tenants at Pies, that's, they think there's an ambulance there, and I've heard that from tenants at Pies also. If we had an ambulance at Fire Station 3, it could possibly require just two personnel. And maybe we would have to get a memorandum of understanding from the union, so that the chief, or the, I mean, the captain or the lieutenant could work with the firefighter and go out on the ambulance call. But I think that's a way we could keep Fire Station 3 open. There are more ambulance requests from that station than fire, and it could save some money. So I would like, I know I've mentioned it before, it's been discussed, it's been, it hasn't been positively received, but I throw that out again, because I frankly, you know, that's just a suggestion, a belief that I have. The other one that we talked about was closing the station at night only. And, again, the chief has explained that that really wouldn't save any money. If you don't have three or four firemen there at night, or three, three plus a lieutenant or a captain, I mean, in my mind, you save money, but I guess, I don't know, again, I'm going to throw it out, because it's something that I mentioned before, and I think it's something we could think about. We do have in our communications here, where it talks about how many more calls there are during the day than at night. So I think that that would satisfy the request that we get during the day. And at nighttime, it definitely, it's lighter. The other thing, the last thing I want to say is, you know, we have some new firefighters coming in now because of these retirements. Is it at all possible to not, to say that the overtime options aren't that lucrative, because we're in a tight budget crunch, because we're trying to save some money here, because we're trying to get the department down to a 0% increase? You know, our overtime budget for the Fire Department has always been high, and this might be a way that we can possibly, I know it's come down over the years, but it might be a way that we could have less overtime, as if we say to these new hires, you know, "There's not going to be as much overtime as," I don't know how you say it, I'm not a fire chief. So, but if you could, and he's shaking his head, thank God she's not a fire chief. But I think that's, that's the way. So those are the four points that I wanted to bring up. I've mentioned them before. They haven't been popularly received, but they're options that I think could possibly save us some money and get the Fire Department to zero.
Counsel, I mean, Commissioner Games, sir.
That deserves a response, all four. And I believe that you folks have heard it, but the folks at home have not. Everything that the Assistant Mayor has discussed in her last four requests is a collective bargaining issue. We are not here to do any collective bargaining. We cannot do collective bargaining. It's to be done when there is a collective bargaining negotiation session. So therefore, the chief, nor the commission, will answer the questions at this time. But the public should know that, why we're not doing that, Nancy.
Council Coviallo, then Council Dwyer.
You know, I think these cost-saving ideas of school care is a great one, and might get us, you know, another year. But a lot of us recognize that we still have a problem in future years. With the, this year, we're going from 25% state funding, from 35% state funding for the retirement to 25, and next year it's going to zero. Those are going to be harder nuts to crack, and I think those are going to have to be cracked through the collective bargaining, and I don't intend to discuss that here. But we need to buy time to get there. And so I like the idea of doing the school care in the short term, but I don't think one year is going to be enough time. So we really need to push the, in my mind, the only other cost savings we can get to before doing collective bargaining is pushing the regionalization idea more. So I hope the commission and the Council can continue to work on that front.
Thank you. Council Coviallo, Council Dwyer, then Council Kennedy.
I agree with what Council Coviallo just said, but I want to go back to his previous point, because I think it's really a good one, and I realize it's what's been bothering me. And, you know, this is back-of-the-envelope math, and I know that, I know this isn't a totally accurate way to think of it, but, but think of it this way, and for those of you who want to work your pencils, think of it this way. We've got a $6 million-plus annual budget here. So if you think of that, and again, I know this is not the way to think of it, divide that by 12, right, and you end up with like $500,000 a month. And again, I know that's not, it's not linear, but just rule of thumb here. And if you divided that by three, now, again, I know the stations cost different amounts, but if you divided it by three, you'd get about $170,000, right? So that's more, that month, that $170,000 is more than what the difference is here. So if I was a firefighter right now, I'd be saying, "Why are they throwing me under the bus?" Because they can fund this for 11 months before, the Council is short a month here, is, you know, a back-of-the-envelope way to say it. Why would you close it now? If we're talking about transition time, buying time, talking to other communities, looking at collective bargaining, why close it now? I mean, you know, I'm an employer. I would never preemptively close something if I had a shot of making it work six months down the road. I use six months as a time horizon. If I can employ people for six months, I'll figure out how to employ them after that. But that's, the way Council Coviallo phrased it, I guess is something that has been bothering me. Now, of course, those figures aren't right, and, you know, it's probably not exactly right, but we're looking at 158,000 out of a $6 million-plus budget. So there's something that doesn't fit for me. And like many of the nuances of how schedules are arranged and all that, I'm sure there's an answer to it, but I can't figure it out.
Anyone care to speak to, perhaps, why we couldn't stay open for 11 months and then not have the money in the last month? Apparently, we don't have a response. Counsel Hitman.
Well, I'll make a different kind of point, though. What concerns me, and it means a lot more creativity has to happen in the future. We, it looks like we can squeeze through and fund it for another year with what looks like a relatively small amount of money, but with everything coming down from the state, a year from now, we're going to have this enormous problem, and we'll be talking about closing Station 3 unless we start doing some dramatic things now to get ready for that. Now, if we believe we can get those dramatic concessions or discoveries, it's fine to keep it open. But if we don't believe they're going to happen, then we're just prolonging the inevitable.
Council Kennedy, then Commissioner Wentworth.
Actually, Council Dwyer kind of asked a question before I asked, "Why, Chief, do we have to close it in July?"
I'd like to answer that, if I could, please.
Sure.
It boils down to a fiduciary responsibility. We can't spend money that we don't have. We have no idea what type of fire activity will take place in this coming year. A major fire, major epidemic, shipboard fire, whatever it happens to be, we don't know what those numbers are. And as the chief has said multiple times, it's our best guess, and that's all we can give you. It's the commission's responsibility to take care of the financial aspects of the Fire Department, just like it's the City Manager's responsibility to take care of the rest of the city budget, plus the Police Department and all. And I don't think that if the City Manager had no contingency fund, would he put plows out every night just to make sure that if it snowed, that the streets would get plowed? I think he would tell you, no, that he can't spend money that he doesn't have either. And that's a very big responsibility. I can tell you, it was shortly after I was elected Fire Commissioner, that the Fire Department almost overspent its budget the first year, almost. And I was reminded that that is my fiduciary responsibility, and that is something that I take extremely seriously. So I refuse to vote to spend money on things that we don't have money to spend.
Council Kennedy.
But it seems to me, at this point, you do have money to spend. Originally, we were told by the chief that it was $350,000 plus, that we needed to run it. We've whittled it down, and thanks to the commission, they've whittled it down to where it's 158. What we're asking for is a little time to see what the, I mean, I heard it right from our City Manager, to see what the state figures might come out at, and finalize those figures, to see some of these questions that are out there, to see some of the things that might be union-related, and maybe we can look at, to look at health insurance. I think that if you're saying that it needs to close on July 1, then tonight, we can't, and we heard from the City Manager, we can't even get a time, tonight cannot be the answer. Then I guess the bottom line is, you're going to have to close it. But if you're saying that you can, we can- But if you're saying that you can, we can have a few months to discuss all this and have a discussion, like we have, and I really appreciate all the discussions that have taken place, and I think this is going to be, I think it was really clear that tonight, several councils and several commissioners have said that this discussion's happening everywhere in the United States, and it is. But I don't want to make a drastic decision and not have it be the right decision when I know that I can have a few months to keep looking into it and investigating it. So I guess if it closes on July 1st, then it is a commission decision, it is a chief's decision. Because what I'm asking is a city councilor that we get a few months to look at all this, and we know that you have the money for those few months.
Counsel Smith, then Chief.
Thank you. I think this comes back to my, my original point I made, which is, we have to set the policy of this board to keep Station 3 open. If we said yes to them, that we want to keep Station 3 open. Now, we, they can keep it open, understanding they're going to go find, see what they can do when they handle their bargaining, but if they don't, or they come up, you know, short, then we have to stand tall and say, then we'll fund the rest of it. But they can't rely on an empty promise from us. And that has to be, as a, as a council, are, do we want to keep Station 3 open? Because even if they go back and they say, you know, and they, we talk with the unions and there's going to be some savings, by the end of the budget, you know, it's going to go back to what this fire commission and the chief has done in years past. What's left in their budget comes back to us, and it goes into contingency fund. They've turned money back year after year after year because of the savings that they've been able to do. So, again, I think we, as a, as a, as a council, need to decide, is Station 3 important to us, yes or no? Then, that gives them the ability to say, okay, maybe we'll keep, we know we're going to get the funds either through their savings or from us, or a combination thereof. But we have to give them the commitment.
Chief.
I think we need to talk about keeping, you know, as a council, outside the money area, do we want to keep Station 3 open or not?
Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been having this discussion for a year now, and we went through this discussion in a very, not very pleasant discussion. We talked about supplementals on money that was taken from the fiscal year 11 budget after I recommended that you not do that. I've been talking about Station 3 closing, if you Google the articles in the Seacoast media, it goes back to December, that with the constraints in the budget, with 90% of the budget being payroll, with all of the increases in gasoline, energy, all of the stuff that's going on, having to eat $250,000 in fixed costs, again, after two years of 0% or less, I told you we could not have three facilities open and staffed. I haven't been unclear about it, I haven't beat around the bush, I've said it over and over, 48 times, Bob. So, I don't understand, if the city council wants to appropriate $6,722,000 for the fire department fiscal year 12, Station 3 is closed. I have whittled this, this item down from $360,000 to $158,000 with the help of my staff, and, to retirements of some very qualified people walking out the door. It's either the city council wants to fund $158,000, or you do not.
Commissioner Gamester.
One of the items, one of the items that, that we talk about is, it's, it's this year that we're talking about, and we're going to be sitting here again next year, doing the same thing unless we say we want to fund the entire 280. With the savings we have got, now figured there's no savings come next year, it's 280, maybe 290, who knows what it is. Do you want to, can had it right, do you want to fund it, and fund it, and fund it? Now, we've been in negotiations for four years. Everybody around this table has been discussing, what kind of savings can they come up with in the next three months? I'll tell you right now that this guy's sitting behind me that are going, they want me to do what? They haven't had a chance to think about it, they haven't had a chance to talk about it, they haven't had a chance to regroup, they haven't had a chance. Negotiations are so slow, I can watch my grass grow. And it's just not going to happen. I will not be able to come back here nine months from now and tell you that we saved $38,000 or something. I would prefer that we were spending money actually had, actually appropriated, actually accounted for, and go from there, and be legal about it. I think, I think the chief is right. We either have to make the decision, ladies and gentlemen, either we're going to do it or we're not. Do we want Station 3, or do we not?
Counsel Spear.
Thank you. I think I completely agree with the commissioner and the fire chief. And really, it comes back to discussions, we've been dancing around, Chris brought up, can we fund it for a few months? And I think you have answered it clearly, that the fire chief made very clear that going back as early as December, I think earlier, these things were going to happen under the budget scenario. And a few more months of discussion going forward after July 1st, nothing magical is going to happen, even all these ideas we've discussed, you know, these ideas have been around long before today, and they haven't happened since today, so I don't think they're going to happen in the near future. And to get to Commissioner Gamester's point exactly, that's right, we've been negotiating for four years. I don't think that anything magical is going to happen in the next few months either. And so I think I'd rather not fund it for a few more months, hoping for something better down the pike, I think that's unrealistic. And so, from the discussion that we've been having tonight, my personal opinion at this point is, I want to stay with the budgeted appropriation that we did.
Counsel Dwyer.
Well, that's an interesting point, I guess, you know, maybe I'll make this point in the opposite way. I think we need a hell of a lot of money back then, because if, if it's closing now, and we essentially have enough, we've given you enough money to keep it open for 11 months, then there's a lot of money out there floating around that we really shouldn't have appropriated. I mean, that's the opposite way of looking at it. Because you either buy into one of those or the other, you know, you can't, we have a fiduciary responsibility too, which is, if, if you decided to close it on July 1st and we have enough to fund it for 10 or 11 months, well, what are we going to do with all that money?
Anyone care to speak to that?
It works both ways.
I would.
Mayor. Yeah, sure, please do, Commissioner.
Thank you. If we could easily divide the budget by three.
Well, divide it by four, or say it's $700,000.
If we divided it by 104, I don't know that it would make a difference, Counselor. I think what we're focusing on is buildings and facilities. If we close a school and move all the teachers to another school, we still have to pay the teachers. If we close Station 3, we're not laying off personnel, we're covering shifts, 90% of our budget is labor, and that's where we pay our salaries. The building itself is not going to save you a third.
I understand that, but I know what you're saving. You're saving overtime, of course, because we're not asking to lay anybody off, you're just redeploying people.
What we are doing is redeploying the same people and the same number of shifts is what we're doing.
Sure.
The building itself out there is not the key to it, so I don't want the public to think that a third of our budget is coming off the top, and we're going to give back a check for a third because one station closed.
All right, so maybe that's...
The personnel, the number of calls which have increased, all of the things, we still have to go. When the phone rings, we have to go. We can't schedule it for next week, we can't say, gee, we're short of parts this week, so we're not going to make our widgets. The phone rang, and we have to go to whatever the emergency is. So please, I just have difficulty with, it's only a third, it's a third less if we close the station.
Right, I think, you know, I know the math on that.
I'm sure I do.
And what I'm trying to do is to get you to say, so, does it cost the same to keep it open or closed? Is that where you're going with this?
What we're saying is, is the overtime that we can put in the other stations when we do this, to safely man Station 3, we can't do it with less than three people.
Right, I, you know, we...
So if those folks move to another station, we can safely man those stations for the overtime and for the folks and the shifts that we would cover.
But let's go to the bottom line, then. Does it cost exactly as much to keep it open as it does to keep it closed?
Of course not. It does not cost exactly...
So what's the difference there?
Tonight, it's $158,000. So if we have $158,000, we can keep that station open. I'd like to pass it to the chief.
Chief.
Thank you. In the past year's budget, with 14 people assigned to the shift, and as I stated to the council earlier, we were doing 14 at night, 14 during the day, then it was 14 at night, then it was 13 during the day. Minimum manning on all shifts, day and night, is 13. So we've reduced our overtime expenditures down. Normally, spending about, about $600,000 on overtime, and that's shift replacement for those personnel that take either long-term injuries, annual leave, whatever the case happens to be. Every year, and if you remember when I became chief, I had to come in and ask you for a supplemental because of a few years of underfunding the fire department. Well, now the cycle's repeated itself, and every year I come in and say, I need 3%, you say 2. I say I need 2%, you say 0. And every year, because it can't come off electricity, it can't come off pencils, it can't come off of diesel fuel, it comes off of personnel. So, last year's budget, because you shorted it $100,000, last year's overtime appropriation was $557,000, approximately $100,000 less than the year before. With fiscal year 12 having to eat the fixed costs, the entire overtime appropriation of fiscal year 12 is $357,000, or about half of what I normally spend on shift replacement. What that means is there is not enough overtime dollars to keep 13 people on duty. If they come to work, they're not out on leave, they're not injured, we're fine. Should they take their leave, should they get injured? And you have to, that $357,000, I have to take that $120,000 or $140,000, I have to set aside for emergency recall, because I do not know how many multiple armed fires we're going to have next year, I do not know what weather events will happen, I do not know if after weather event FEMA will reimburse us. That's recall. So when you boil it down, I have about $150,000 next year, just to cover vacations, and it's not enough. So therefore, minimum manning will go from 13 to 10. So with the money that's there, and Counsel Dwyer, I don't know where you're getting your math, but with the money that's there, there is enough money to have either 10 or 11 minimum manning 24/7, and that is enough people for two fire stations.
Okay, Counsel Kennedy, and then I'm going to, at this point, I certainly, we can continue with the discussion. I think, just, Counsel Kennedy, please go ahead, but I'm just going to say procedurally, no matter what we do this evening as a council, in our discussion with the fire commission, we're not going to keep Fire Station 3 open as a result of action we take tonight. It may be as a result of action we take in another meeting, and judging by the discussion this evening, it would be a fruitful and varied discussion. And so I'll just say that. Counsel Kennedy, please go ahead.
Just for simplification, and, and I guess I need it simplified. I have, we're, and I want to state the obvious. The obvious is, we do not have, we're not laying anyone off. The obvious is that all the same people, or all the same equipment will still be in use, just at a different place. The obvious is, is that accurate or not?
No, it's not true.
What will be, what equipment will not be on?
There will, currently, right now, on duty in the city is two engines, a ladder, and two ambulances. One engine will go out of service in the fiscal year 12 budget.
Okay. So, we're down one engine out of this.
Correct.
But that really doesn't affect the budget currently. So I have the same amount of people, they're just leaving a facility, and they're going to two other facilities. I have to agree with Counsel Dwyer. I'm missing how, where the savings is, and I really need to see, and, and I understand that you potentially won't have as much overtime, and the question I have is, if we don't need those people because they're on vacation, then do we need those people? And maybe, and maybe I'm just being too naive and too innocent, but that would be some of the things that I would need to ask, is that if we're going to use the same amount of people, and we're not going to, then, I don't see where Station 3 is really costing us if we're just moving them in. And if they're not important enough to provide overtime for, then the question I have is, why do we even have them? So, maybe I've made it too simple, and maybe I'm missing some big picture, but if I am, please tell me.
Okay, I see Chief, and I see Dick.
We're going to, I'll defer to him for a second.
Okay, Chief.
Counsel, those people are extremely important. We have, one line in the budget talks about salaries. That is the 60, 60 full-time people, because reducing by one in fiscal year 12's budget. 56 of those people are broken out into groups of 14, four groups. Now, payroll stays the same as it has for the last three, four years, the uniform salary line stays the same. Below that are different accounts that deal with overtime. The money has always come from overtime. If we don't have people to float, like when we were doing 14, day and night, every time someone was out, it was automatically overtime, they fill that position back in. If you recall the Matrix report, the Matrix report told you to hire four firefighters to reduce overtime. With less overtime, I have to use those people that are assigned to the shift. Remember I said it, we'll have 13 minimum manning, we'll go down to 10? That means three people can be out, day and night, before I have any overtime expenses at all. So salaries is one line, overtime is another. So whether I have 18 people on duty, or 10, whatever the minimum manning number is, is going to tell me how much expenses I have in overtime. Now, we've backed overtime out of this budget to a dangerous level. Therefore, even though there's money in the budget to keep people employed and to keep 14 names on each shift roster, or 13 for next year, because I certainly wouldn't want to hire anybody in fiscal year 12 just to lay them off in fiscal year 13, there is enough money in that overtime budget to cover 10 or 11 per shift. The other three people assigned to the shift will be used to cover overtime, we won't have overtime expenses until we get down below 11 or 10.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Yep, sure.
To carry that one step further, if you discarded those people, and you only had 10 per shift, somebody called in sick, you now have nobody to call in to be the 10th person, or the 9th person, or the 7th person, therefore, closing another station. So you need that cushion, those people are your overtime.
Okay.
That you've always wanted us to do, that's it, it's your overtime. There's no overtime budget, because we're filling it with people that we have.
Thank you. Do we need to have further discussion at this time on that particular and interesting issue? Okay. So with that, counsel, you know, at this point, I'm hesitant to say that, you know, at this point, whatever action we do, whatever we say tonight, Fire Station's going to close. And so, if, if, you know, a council puts something on a council agenda in July, and they wish to do that, they can do that, and we can have that discussion in open court, as it were, then, we can do that. At this point, I think I hear a lot of varied opinions amongst councils, and oftentimes, when we are in a work session, I can say, well, there appears to be a rough unanimity of opinion here, and I don't know necessarily that there is. Now, if people feel strongly about that, I certainly invite them to speak, and hope that they do. But regardless of what we say this evening, the Fire Station's going to close, and regardless of what we say this evening, it would have to end up as an agenda item, and we'd have to have the debate and the discussion and the inquiry of staff, and vote on it one way or the other, and it would be a supplemental appropriation, and it wouldn't happen until July. So, does anyone care to have further discussion about this in any way this evening than we should? Counsel Smith.
Thank you. I think, as I've been saying, I think as a council, even in the work session, we have to, we should state right now where, what our intentions are before we get up there, because they have to have an idea of what our intentions are. And I don't think they're walking out of here knowing, you know, what everyone's intentions are, and if we're, if we're going to wait now until we, we get up onto, up to the diocese. I think we should all state right now, if we want to, Counsel Spear has already said what his opinion is, I'm stating mine, I'd like to hear from the rest of my fellow counselors of, do we want to close Station 3 or not?
Well, I just, I hear your question, it's yours to ask, it's not necessarily yours to compel their response. So, I think it's up to the councils to do what they want to do. We have already voted for a budget that is in place, and that budget effectively, as we've been told by the fire commission, closes the, the Fire Station, and those who voted for that budget voted for that action. So, we can rediscuss it, and if councils feel... So we can re-discuss it, and if Councillors feel the need to have an additional restatement of their views tonight, certainly open forum, but welcome to do it. If we don't feel that discussion serves any further purpose, then we can end this meeting now, and thank everyone for their participation with a lot of food for thought and consideration. Counsel Coviallo.
I think all 12 of the elected officials around this table want to keep Station 3 open, and I appreciate how different people will frame the question, but I'm going to frame the question, is do we want to keep the Station 3 open? Yes. Are we in a financial situation where we can? In my opinion, the answer's no.
Further discussion? Would you like me to restate?
It's the last part that I...
Counsel Coviallo, could you restate your...
You want to keep it open, yes, that's the last statement I couldn't hear.
Do I think we are in a financial situation where we can? In my opinion, the answer's no.
Okay.
So there we are.
You were phrasing the wrong way.
Sorry.
No, he heard the open part, and that perked him up.
But anyway, like the...
Yeah, okay, all right. Any further discussion at this time? People want to speak, they're most welcome to do so. If not, we will end the meeting, and I thank you very much for your participation, and I do think it was reasoned and well-considered participation, which we appreciate. We're getting better at this discussion, which is obviously in some way going to continue. So thank you very much.